I'll call it to order the Richland Bean Blossom Community School Corporation's public budget hearing, and please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Again, this is the public budget hearing, and we have let the roll call reflect that all the board members are present except for Mrs. Angie Jacobs is unable to attend this evening. And so there's actually three budgets. There is the 2024, I'll call it general budget, the 2024 capital projects plan, and the 2024 bus replacement plan. And we'll address each of these individually, and each has a opportunity for the public to make comments should they choose to do so. So the first, again, is the 2024 proposed budget, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Irwin.
Yeah, so the Form 3, which was in the board packet there, that was submitted via Gateway on August 25th. The capital projects plan and the bus replacement plan were both posted on Gateway as well and on our website. I give you guys that comparison list of last year's budget to this upcoming budget and looking at just some of those key differences. So when we build those budgets, we're looking at actuals from the first six months of 2023. We're looking at things from facility study, enrollment study, conversations that we're having within our, within our staff. Excuse me, sorry. And so when we up those and go through it, we're going through those line by line. So when you look at the levies, operations fund was able to grow by 4%. That's capped by the MOGQ. And then the, sorry. And then the debt service, that levy shows at a little over 12 million, but we expect that to be lower and in line with our levy from this past year. So with that, I'll take any comment on the regular 2024 budget.
So first is, again, the 2024 proposal budget. Are there any comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll move on to the 2024 capital projects plan. Anything else to add to that?
No, that just, that just takes a list of the known possible projects that could be used from the operations fund.
Any public comments on the capital project plan? Seeing none, we'll move on to the bus replacement plan. Anything further on it?
Nothing doing that one, just shows a couple of replacements on a couple buses each year, just the normal trend.
Okay. All right. Any public comments on the bus replacement plan? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing, budget hearing. And now, I will call it to order the September 2023 regular school board meeting for the Richland Bean Blossom Community School Corporation. Again, please let the record reflect that all board members are here with the exception of Mrs. Angie Jacobs. And please also know that tonight, for our first time, we are attempt, at least attempting, our good friends from CATS are here, as they always are, but now we are live streaming this evening. So that's new, and so we're, we're happy to get that underway this evening. So are there any visitor comments this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on into the Mustang moment. Dr. Sanders?
Yes, we have a very good Mustang moment. I'm setting them up here, but we've been very excited about our student-run business at Edgewood High School, the Coffee Corral, and they are pioneers really in the area of developing and creating student-run businesses. And Stacia Myers is here tonight. She's a business teacher at the high school, but she leads the, the student-run business, and she's an integral part of our Ready Schools Initiative. And so Stacia's here with three students, and they are going to present tonight, and Mrs. Myers is going, is going to introduce the students as soon as I get the PowerPoint ready.
My name is Stacia Myers, and I'm one of the business teachers at Edgewood High School, and I have the fortune to be able to help with the Coffee Corral. We've been working on this since, I believe, we went through our whole Ready Schools Initiative back in, starting in 2019 and 2020, and we started working on the Coffee Corral, actually building it in these, I want to say it was the fall of 2020. And so it's been a long process, and we are now up and running. So I'm, I have three managers here that I'm going to introduce to you, and they are going to give you an update as to what we've been up to. So I have Jackson Klinger, Owen Snyder, and Lilith Henkel, and they are going to come up and they're going to tell you what we've been working on.
So in this presentation, we're just going to go over the basics and like our main achievements that we've gone through. So the first one was our EHS, our very first football game. We sold 90 different drinks, ranging from our flavored lemonades to our iced coffee and even our version of the pink drink. That was our first, like, out of school, and it was really successful, successful for us. During the Edgewood showcase, we reached 123 customers, and we sold to a variety of different people, from community members, students, and staff, and we served more drinks and reached more customers than we ever have in any other way. We've been partnering with the market, marketing course, when we've been working on advertising materials and creating flyers for coffee shop items and special events that we will be at. We've been seasonal items as well. This is our pumpkin spice latte that we have for the fall right now, and we've been working on a new peppermint one for the winter months as well. I have been working on an online ordering website, so it will be used school-wide for staff ordering and delivery throughout all Edgewood schools, whether that be the junior high or EIS or the intermediate. We had worked on a student feedback form. We created a Google form that was sent to the students, and we wanted to generate ideas that would be, that would be useful to us to know when we should best be open and what would be interesting to our students. We received 137 different responses that helped us move forward in our decision-making.
Hi, I'm Owen Snyder. I started working on the coffee shop with Mrs. Myers my sophomore year. I'm now a senior. I did not have room in my schedule this year to have it as an actual class, but I've still been doing sort of the, some manager activities. I make the schedule every week. So originally, we were sending it in on a Google form, just asking people if they could work or not. But through my experience with German American Bank and Upskill, I've learned that there's better ways to do that. So we realized students check their phones a lot more than they check their, their school emails. So the Sling app is there, so we can see when students are available, when they're unavailable, you know, when they can work and schedule them through that. They'll get a notification on their phone when their shift starts. So it's a, it's really great to be able to do that that quickly and get them in and out, and they know when they're going to work, so we don't have any miscommunications. So, but definitely the coffee shop has helped a ton with getting students experience during the school day, real, real-world experience, work experience, to where if they don't want to work a real job after school, they can get that to school. I think that's, that's one of our main goals, is to reach the student body and help them with work experience during the school day.
So I'm Jackson, and I've been working on our cost of goods and what we should be charging for the coffee shop. Last year, we didn't have anything, and I figured it was pretty important that we know, we need to know what we're spending and how much we should be charging. I've, we've, I analyze the Google form responses, and we're changing our hours to maximize how much revenue we're actually going to make, rather than just paying people to work and nobody show up. I've been learning how to handle cash deposits and invoices the last couple of weeks, which I think's very beneficial for this job, but for outside experience as well. So we are working on a delivery system for, for homeroom, because we're not open her, open during homeroom currently, but special events has more than made up our current homeroom downtime, and we think when that home, when homeroom comes back, when we can get the delivery system implemented, we can boost our sales up to $450 more a month. The red is our current timeline with, that's four weeks with our special events and no homeroom. Special events are the showcase and the football games. And the blue is a four-week period from last year where we had homeroom. So just two special events have already accounted for 31.7% of all of our revenue in a four-week period. So the blue, we've made $1,282 in revenue over four weeks, but just two special events, which is less than 10 hours combined, has made up $596. Thank you.
Do you have any questions for them? Maybe they or myself, we'd all be happy to answer anything you might have for us.
Some of you came and visited. You got any, any constructive criticism that you would like to give to us or feedback? We'll take any feedback.
I stopped by for the first time during the showcase.
Yeah.
And I just thought it was run very well. I had a smoothie, and it was very good.
Oh, good.
That was very good, and I just really appreciate the hard work that the students are putting in to, to make this business successful.
And I had a strawberry lemonade at the showcase, and it was also delicious. And I was thinking, I think it was almost exactly two years ago that we heard about the business plan from your managers at that time.
Right.
And I'm impressed that you've been able to rule into additional strong management individuals. Nice job.
We, I couldn't, I obviously couldn't do it without them, and especially these three this year have taken a lot. It was a lot, it was a big workload, and they have taken a lot off of my plate, and it's nice to see them grow and see what they're doing with all of it. So it's been, it's rewarding on my end as a teacher, just to see what they, what they do, so.
Well, I was in a restaurant for 18 years, and just the business analysis that Jackson presented to us, that's, that's impressive. So it's, it's, when you talk about real-world experience.
Yeah.
That's, that's it right there.
As soon as he walked into my accounting class last year, I was like, he's the guy. We need, we need him next year.
It's just been very exciting to watch the coffee shop go from the, the business plan, because I remember it was during COVID, and so we had the, the students present their business models through Zoom to a group of local businesses, to the point now where we're showing data and tracking data and tracking sales and surveying our, the customers and responding to those customers. Of course, we want the, the coffee shop and all of our student-run businesses to be as successful as possible, but we have to remember it's a classroom. And we, you know, just the fact that they're sharing this information tonight and talking about invoices and, and, and the nutrition side of the, the business, just tells me how much they, they are learning. So we have three amazing students here tonight, and I'm going to ask one of the students, and I think he can handle it, to add a little bit more. Owen, if you could come back up and talk about your internship, because he said something before the meeting that really got me excited about how much he's learning in his internship. So if you don't mind, Owen.
So this summer, I got hired on at German American Bank for a paid internship, and it's been nothing but great for me. They really care about me, and I'll tell you that I learn more every day there than I have anywhere else. School is great, and I learned a lot of stuff from school, a lot of soft skills, but just knowing how to do some of the things that I've learned how to do with banking, it also, it also let me know what I wanted to do with the rest of my life, you know, what career I wanted to go into. So now I know what I want to go to school for. I enjoy going into work every day. It's a great environment, and I think that if any student has room on their schedule, an Upskill internship would be great, not just the bank, but, but any of them. The bank especially for me has taught me a lot about business, a lot about how to carry myself in a professional setting, more so than any fast food place would. And so the students that are getting on, working at the coffee shop, they're learning a lot. They're learning customer service, how to make drinks, all of that stuff can be useful. And then also, I think the Upskill internships are even more useful, just with, you know, everyday life, learning how to, how to do stuff, you know, just being, being around people that can teach you stuff that you, you can't learn in a classroom. I think that's really valuable. So it's been.
Owen, there's a lot of majors in business, is what I think you want to mention.
I'm thinking finance right now. Mrs. Myers. Yeah, I'm thinking finance. After being around it for a couple of months already, it's just, I love every day when I go into work, so I think that's what I want to do, so.
Really, when we talk about the success of the program, it's not that they make great drinks and, and things like that, it's the fact that they're getting these experiences and that they can apply that to, you know, the job skills directly as soon as they, they enter the job market. So this is, that's the real success.
And it's a win-win really, because students love their coffee. We've learned that. So students love their coffee, you know, we get people to work, you know, learn more. So that's, that's really our goal in the end, so.
So the teachers.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
What's, what's the tough situation that we're so far?
Honestly, when, when I started scheduling, it was tough, just because so, some people would respond, some people wouldn't, you know, so. And then, you know, on the weekends, I would make the schedules, some people wouldn't check their, their email before they went to bed and wouldn't wake up for their shift, but I think, you know, the Sling, Sling app has helped a lot with that. But just the scheduling, probably, just trying to reach the students as a student, because students obviously listen to teachers more, like Mrs. Myers. But yeah, just relating to the students while I'm a student probably has been the toughest thing overall, but I think we're making it work.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you, yes.
Well, believe it or not, that was more exciting than the public budget hearing. So, now, there's a great group of kids there.
It had been real good.
Yeah, it was, it was a great group of students, exciting to see what they're learning. Next, we have the consent agenda. This would be the approval of minutes for the August 21st, 2023 regular board meeting. It would be the treasurer's report for August of 2023, and Mr. Durn, roll the claims, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Gross wages on August the 4th, 2023 for $540,744.54 for gross wages, mini payroll on August 17th, 2023 for $3,838.67 for gross wages on August the 18th, 2023 for $660,892.81 for grand total in that category of $1,205,476.2. Claims prepaid for vouchers on 8/1, 2023, 31/23, $1,468,851.57. Claims regular vouchers for September the 18th, 2023 for $535,391.82. For Forest Hill vouchers for 9/19, 2023 for $149.01. For total voucher, in the voucher area, $2,40,392.40 for a grand total of $3,398,65.42. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Durn. We also have personnel resignations, retirements, non-renewals, leaves and terminations, C1 through 6, and personnel appointments and transfers, D1 through 29. There are also the annual renewal agreements, and Dr. Sanders, can you discuss the renewal agreement for JAG?
Yes, this is just our agreement that we have with the South Central Region workforce that provides the JAG program to Edgewood High School, and JAG stands for Jobs for America's Graduates, and it enables students who might be at, at risk to develop some skills, creating resumes, resumes, practicing interviews and such, to help them to prepare for the workforce someday. Jill Ferguson is doing an amazing job with these students. It's a great program, and we want to continue to do that, so we recommend approval on that.
We also have a donation, $5,000 from the Don Cowden Foundation to provide behavioral, behavior incentives for the EIS students. We appreciate that gift from Don Cowden Foundation. Also, there are two out-of-state and overnight field trips. These are actually local, not out-of-state, but overnight trips. One is the High School Music Warehouse overnight trip to Bedford for their annual retreat, and the High School Sophisticated Ladies overnight trip to Bedford for their annual retreat. Dr. Sanders, do you have anything?
Yes, so we try not to do this, but every once in a while it happens that we have some field trips where, where the, the information's not submitted on time, and so these two trips actually happened this past weekend, and it's an annual trip that they take, so nothing new there, but I just wanted the board to know that this is retroactive, and we apologize, we try not to let that happen, but it does from time to time.
And finally, on the consent agenda is consideration to surplus the EIS lunchroom tables. So with the renovations that was made at the lunchroom for EIS, we have the old tables that we need to surplus. So do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
I move the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions, comments?
Just, I just got a quick question on the. Well, thanks to the Don Cowden Foundation, that's awesome. And on the JAG, how many students approximately we have in that program this year?
Seventeen. Um, right now, I think we have, there are three, four sections, and there are about, probably about 50 kids.
Seven to eighteen, yes, yeah.
Yeah. In any theory, it's just happening or identified. Sometimes kids are identified, they're not interested in being a part of the program. So, no, I don't think we've ever had anybody turn down, so.
Good. Yeah. On the, on the tables, I have this question to ask. What, when the surplus, does it go on a website? Anybody can go on there, or is it at a, we have an auction at a certain time of the year?
No, it's a surplus site that we put that up on. It should be linked on our website as well.
Okay. Perfect.
I would say during the, uh, Dollar Scholars 5K, I got to get in and see the new, the new setup. It looks good.
The new cafeterias look really nice in there, yeah, super nice. So, all right, thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. And our principal CATS, could you pick up Principal Ackerman? Okay, okay. Just wanted to make sure. Thank you. Next is the Assistant Superintendent's Report. Mr. Irwin.
All right, you guys should have cash flow there in front of you. It's kind of starting out with the education fund. Things continue to roll in really steady. I didn't change much on projections, as we just kind of wait to finalize ADM. ADM is two weeks from today, October 2nd. As far as our numbers, they look relatively stable and flat from what they were last year. Our last count was about 2650, and that number, again, it just moves around over time. So I would imagine that number will either go up or down a little bit, just depending on how things roll for the next couple of weeks. Interest on our, on our accounts remains really high because of the federal rates, so we are trending very nicely in the education fund. Debt service, there's nothing for receipts or expenditures in debt service. That's planned. I've started working on the 2024 tax anticipation warrant, which is what, that yearly warrant that we do for cash flow purposes in debt service. So I've started working on that application. As we go through next month in the October meeting, you'll see those resolutions for that as well, to get your permission. Operations fund, again, continues to follow the projections pretty closely. Still looks like we're going to eat into a little bit of cash this year as far as total cash balance in that fund. That's nothing that we're too worried about at this point. Really, it's, it's about as steady as you're going to get as far as we're in the year at. September is the delightful three-pay month, so that's great for our employees. So two times a year, we have a three-pay month, so you'll see elevated payroll and, and benefits numbers in both the education fund and the operations fund. But again, not a whole lot of changes from what you saw last month. I do want to talk a little bit, just give some quick updates about the 2023 bond. The sale of the bonds was on August 29th. Stiefel and, and us as well, very pleased with the results of the sale. I think one of the big things that they mentioned was that we really benefited from being one of the first deals out on the market for school deals at that time. We were able to get a 4.3% interest. I know in a lot of the projections that they're running out to us, it was about 6%. A lot of things factored into that, like I said, being one of the first deals out. Our credit rating got improved through S&amp;P. We had a lot of interest from buyers, private and commercially. That allowed them to start to drive down the interest costs, and the way that works is they open that up for buyers. As they see a lot of interest, they'll say, hey, how many of you are interested now at this interest rate, and they continue to drop it. So they were able to pull down some of the interest costs for us throughout the life of the bond. So that was really great to see. The closing of the sale of the bonds is actually tomorrow, September 19th, with wire of funds going by the end of the day tomorrow. As far as the projects involved in the bond, quick update on that. I know we do have the work session coming up this, this Wednesday to talk about the six projects that are included in that 2023 bond. We're still in the design phase of, of those projects. Things are moving along nicely, a lot of different people involved through that process, whether it's directors, principals, different people throughout that process, having skillmen involved from the get-go as well has been great, as they continue to come back and look at our ideas and give us updates on what that estimate looks like as far as what that scope now is. I know inevitably, when we talk through those things, the scope kind of moves around. Hey, what if we did this? Hey, what if this looked like this? As we kind of finalize and firm up some of the details of those plans. And so they've been continuing to provide updated estimates on what the cost of those projects are going to be as we stay within the confines of what those bonds allowed us to do. We've also been staying in contact with Jacob McClellan from Bose McKinnney as well to just make sure that we're staying within the, the, the legal parameters of that as well. So things are moving along nicely. We're excited for Wednesday for you guys to see some updates on that, and, and when the time is right, start to be able to share out some things with the public so that they can get excited about the plans that we have. That'll take any questions?
Any questions, Mr. Irwin? I do look forward to the work session. I think it'd be a good opportunity for the board to, to weigh in on some of the decisions on, on what the design should look like, so I appreciate that work session. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Irwin. All right. Now, we have the Director of Student Services report, and for that, we have Jennifer Anderson tonight.
Okay, let me get set up here. All right. Okay. So tonight, I'm going to just talk about two areas, our social-emotional learning and our school-based mental health services. So our social-emotional learning is based on TBRI, which is Trust-Based Relational Intervention. This is throughout our corporation, grades K through 12. This is the foundation on which we build SEL and our mental health services. This is, this is everything behind what we do. It's an attachment-based, trauma-informed, research-based intervention, and is designed to meet the needs of, of very vulnerable children. What it also does, though, is it also helps the adults recognize their own needs and their own internalizations when it comes to working with children that, that may be a little more difficult or maybe dysregulated, or, or children who have had significant a little more difficult or maybe dysregulated or, or children who have had significant trauma. And so it really helps the adults recognize and regulate themselves in order to best support the children in a very trusting and very felt safety way. So, all of our teachers have been trained in T B R I, our staff has been trained in T B R I since we began our journey with Hope Alight in 2020, not the best of years to start something, but it was a, a good year for us. It is through Texas Christian University through the Karen Purvis Institute on Child Development and it is the foundation for most trauma-based informed practices. With S E L, we have curriculum that supports our students that is aligned with T B R I in addition to their curriculum and the curriculum is separated out per, per building or per level because it addresses different things. So, in the elementary school, our tier one services are provided by second step curriculum. In the middle school, our foundation services is Y try and then at the high school, our foundational tier one support and curriculum is the core project. When people think of S E L, a lot of different things come to mind because of the current climate. All S E L is, in general, is life skills, it's teaching students what we would assume they would know, but in today's reality, they don't. They need help, they need assistance, it's responsible decision-making, how do you go about that? How do you set goals and work towards your goals? How do you cooperate with others when we don't get along on the playground because someone took your, took your, took your swing? What's the best way to go about having a good relationship with that person and not pushing them off the swing? So what's a better response for that? Negotiating conflict, as we start looking at secondary students, how do they negotiate conflict with someone they don't get along with, whether it be friends in the classroom or whether it be working, oh, they all left. So Mrs. Myers, working in a, in a situation in, in a building or working outside in, Jen, you're going to have to remind me what you call that, when they go out, up skills, internships? Okay, working in the internships, how do you actually negotiate sometimes when you don't get along with someone? Those are life skills that we help teach, just being respectful, or how do you have fun with friends? So, there's, the S E L curriculum is really designed to be able to work with others in a very respectful and a very trusting way. Whoops, went the wrong way. Our school-based mental health services encompass everything from supporting students as a check-in, check-out, just how you're doing, to having ongoing individualized mental health counseling that's specific to the school environment. How do we help students navigate their day? Our providers provide intervention and prevention programs for suicide, for vaping, that's a huge issue right now. They help provide students with lunch groups that maybe somebody just needs to make a friend, so they're there to help facilitate how you make a friend. They support individualized regulation breaks when a kiddo needs, needs just a little break to just kind of decompress for a while and self-regulate. And most importantly, they help support our teachers. Sometimes our teachers need that break, sometimes they need to just kind of step away for just a moment and have, have just five minutes to go to the bathroom and our team can jump in and help support them there. They get intent, as intensive as coordination of inpatient returns to school, we have several students who have been hospitalized for various mental health issues and they help coordinate and make sure that student is fully supported when they return to school. They are our main contact for D C S, they are the ones who are most likely reporting to D C S and they are the ones who are most likely sitting in with D C S when they may come to the school to interview the student. So they are really helping to facilitate a lot of those outside counseling agency coordinations and making sure that the students receive the services that they need that may stretch beyond what our schools, what our school can provide. In the elementary setting, these are our numbers just from about August 15th until today. I can tell you these numbers are an underestimate because we're all getting used to entering things into a spreadsheet and sometimes just as humans, we forget. So as of right now, in the elementary schools combined, our, our mental health team has responded to thirty-seven separate incidents, whether they are needed for crisis control or just needed kind of on the fly because something's going on. We currently have forty-eight students who are being monitored and directly served by the elementary student support team, so that's our E S S Ps with the SMART grant. They are providing individualized services or small group services to students. This year, our school psychologist, Mallory Trescone, who has been in the elementary school setting for many years, is now able, because we do have some other supports in place, she's super excited because she's able to, to lead individual learning support groups for students who may be struggling with getting homework done or may be struggling with completing their work and she's also able to provide some S E L services to help facilitate some more, some more in-depth type groups. So she is beyond thrilled that she's actually now getting, getting a chance to do this and not just evaluating and assessing students like you would typically understand a school psychologist would do. We have fifteen students who have been referred out to our tier two and that is through work with our SMART grant and our Tims grant with the school psychologist graduate interns that are coming in and helping. And then we have twenty-eight students who are receiving services and their families are receiving services, which is our highest level of support through adult and child in the elementary setting, where they're receiving a more wraparound service, but then are provided the skills supports that they need within our, within our schools. Little different story at the secondary. Our secondary students currently between the two buildings, there's a hundred and forty-seven students who are being monitored and served by our social workers and our school counselors. It's significant, we have a lot higher need and more in-depth need at the secondary level, but we're, the goal is that the work that everybody's putting in at the elementary school will start to lessen that need at the secondary level, but they are, to say the least, on their toes twenty-four seven. We have twenty-three students who've been referred for support through the I U group, through the I U school psychologists and we have forty students who are currently being served as wraparound services through adult and child in tier three. What we typically will see is a larger number of our students as far as the SMART group, the elementary student service providers and our school counselors, those numbers will be larger because those are more tier one services, so you would expect about eighty percent of our student population will get served by, by our staff itself and those issues should be typically able to be resolved within a short amount of time and they're, they're kind of in and out and gone. About twenty percent of our students should be served in tier two, which right now would be our coordination with I U school psychology and the graduate students there and then the top about five, ten percent should be referred out and served by adult and child or other outside agencies. So right now, as we're just getting started, those numbers are a little skewed, but as we get the systems going and as our, our student support teams who meet every single week with administrators, school counselors, school social workers to discuss students to determine who's the best person, what's the best support and they're monitored every week and as that continues to, to move along the school year, we'll start to see those numbers start to, to take shape in that tiered support system. And then I just wanted to give a shout out to who our team members are. We have Jordan Truax, who's our mental health coordinator for all of elementary, Jessica Siglin, Amy Ericellian and Kate Johnson are all of our elementary student services providers, Lindsay Howell is our licensed clinical social worker, Susan Keller is our phenomenal wellness teacher, Mallory Trescone, our school psychologist, and then our I U school psychology doctoral and graduate students in the elementary schools. And then our secondary team, we have Brittany Straw, Callie Schlemmer and Jesse Loughlin at E J H S and we have Lane Howard and Zoe Reisman, who are providing the majority of services at, at E H S for mental health supports. We also have Dr. Erin Welch, who's one of our school psychologists, who focuses a lot on autism and E D evaluations for students, that's her main, her main focus, but she also does provide a lot of executive functioning, skill groups and a lot of support in our more self-contained classrooms to help them navigate just the social part of being in a school. And then also our school psychology students from I U school psychology, the doctoral and graduate students are also present at the, at the secondary. That is S E L in a nutshell.
I think it's important for people to understand what work we are doing in this area, so I really appreciate the presentation. And also these, you know, are not only skills that will help them in school, but these are skills that they need in the job market. So, and some of the things we've heard from, you know, our contacts with local employers and things are, you know, conflict resolution, those kind of things are lacking in, in, in the job market right now and so being able to work on it from, you know, kindergarten on is, is going to be great for, you know, one thing you usually don't think about, but in our graduate profile, that's exactly, you know, things that we need to be doing. So, I appreciate all the hard work that you and your crew are doing on this.
Thank you, we're, got a great team.
What's exciting is, you know, five years ago, four or five years ago, we did not have a, a mental health team at all. Well, we did, it amounted, amounted to the counselors, the teachers and the principals and, and besides teaching and learning and running the school, you had to also address mental health issues, so, which have always existed. But now we have somebody or some people, a team, who could focus on those needs and then our, allows our teachers to focus on what they're all about and that's teaching children, helping our students to learn. So, we're in a great leadership with Jennifer Anderson and by the way, for future board meetings, we're going to alternate between Jennifer Barrett and Jennifer Anderson and so every other month, they're going to get up and talk about an area underneath their umbrella and, and help the board be in the community, be more informed about what we're doing across the Edgewood Schools.
You have played a major role in this, I know from even as time as assistant superintendent, mental health has been something that you really wanted to strengthen our, our services for and so I, I know that you are the impetus for getting this going and we really appreciate that being a, a major priority for you.
Well, thank you very much, but we have a great team and I'm just so excited about what we're doing, not only with mental health and a lot of other areas, so I'll share more of that in my report.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, our next item is consideration to approve an agreement with the town of Ellisville for the third school resource officer, this is very exciting, Dr. Sanders.
This is exciting. We have come a long way in this department also. When I first came here, we had one school resource officer that had to serve all of our schools and then thankfully for the secured school safety grant, we were able to hire a second S R O and so for the last few years, we've had Jason Brown, who's worked at the junior high and high school and Alec Leggio, who's worked and served the preschool and the primary and the intermediate schools. And, you know, it's just, it's just so important when you're, emergencies never come when you think they ought to come, of course you never want to have emergencies, but they always come at the, the wrong time and when one, when the S R O is already busy dealing with an issue at the high school, there's an emergency maybe that happens at the junior high. And so, we wanted to have a third school resource officer so that in times of emergency that we can serve better, we can responding efficiently and in a timely amount of time that, that the, it saves lives basically and that's what we're all about here. And so, we looked into the possibility of adding a third school resource officers, we had some conversations with the town of Ellisville and talked with Matt about how we might pay for a third school resource officer and so we've been able to develop an agreement, Christine Bartlett and the town of Ellisville worked on an agreement, the town of Ellisville has already approved this agreement and we've interviewed four school resource officers and we're going to be able to, the police department is actually hiring Sam Miller for that and so we'd just like to ask the board tonight to approve this school resource officer that will be assigned to the junior high and then Jason will be just at the high school and then Alec will still cover the elementary schools. The agreement is for one year and for sixty-five thousand dollars.
And what are the main provisions of the agreement, you know, who's supplying what and?
The, the town of Ellisville, the Ellisville Police Department supplies the car and pays the benefits and pays for equipment and training and so we will put our, our money towards the salary of the school resource officer. And we just received, well, I'll say this in my report, I'm jumping ahead of myself.
Do we have motion?
I need approval, I'm very excited as well about this third officer. We're going to have three big marked police cars up here to shoo off the people that, you know, want to cause us trouble, so I think that in my fifty-plus years of experience, I've noticed that a marked police car really, you know, makes things go a lot smoother so, you know, and what I see with Alec, of course, at the elementary schools, a kid, just love him, Jason has fit in quite well with the high school and junior high and Sam, who's also an Edgewood graduate, will fit in quite well at the, at the junior high, so we're looking forward to that, so.
And Sam is an Edgewood graduate and his wife, or his fiancee, she says, is also an Edgewood graduate and it was a strong pool of candidates for this position and Sam really stood out as really understanding the role of a, a school resource officer. In our program, we focus on the proactive side of things, of course, they respond to situations all the time as a reaction, that's part of their job, but anything we could do on the proactive side of things, we expect our school resource officers to be building relationships, coming to events, talking with the students and I, I think that when we talk about mental health, Jennifer was talking about mental health at the elementary level, someday impacting what we're doing at, what we're seeing at the high school level, same with S R Os. The, the, having a third, our S R O will allow really for that additional time to develop those relationships, so by the time the students get up to the high school, they will have already understood that a school resource officer is somebody that they can go to for help if they have things going on in their lives, it's just somebody else that can pour into them.
Do we have motion, is there a second? Moved and seconded, any further discussion?
I just have a couple of questions, Mr. Irwin, you help me with this. So, we've got three, we got three of these young men now helping us out with the S R Os. In the summer months, what are, what are some of the responsibilities for the school corporation and like for the two weeks that we're off at Christmas? I've, I've had those questions asked me by people and I said, they have some additional responsibilities within the department, I was kind of a guess, but what, if you could kind of explain that?
The summertime is about fifty days that they could possibly work for the town.
Okay.
But out of that fifty days comes vacation that they make up where they don't take vacation or days off through the school year.
Through the school year, okay.
Same way with Christmas and Thanksgiving.
Okay.
And then they have, they have, they have at least two weeks, if possibly three weeks of training that comes out of that fifty days.
Okay.
So, there's, there's not very much time that they're not going to be involved with the school, it's going to be very, very, very minimal time and, you know, like, you talk, you know, you know, Dr. Sanders, you've been in the business, there's all kinds of meetings that they like to have us up here for. the business, there's all kinds of meetings that they like to have us up here for, so, and they're responsible for all those.
Okay, and then, well, all three of them kind of split some of the evening activities as well?
They'll be, well, like, Jason and Alec have been at both home games, I think, already.
I saw them at the showcase.
And they'll probably, they'll be all, all three will be there when Sam gets through his training and into his realm, so to speak, but he'll be at the junior high games especially.
Okay.
Uh, and, uh, so.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
We do really appreciate the town of Edelsville working with us on this. This is, uh, a benefit, uh, to both of us.
Yes, it will.
And that partnership is, is one that, you know, we don't talk about enough, that, that, you know, the town of Edelsville is a great partner with the school corporation.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, they are, they're good people to work for.
Anything further? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, our next item, uh, is, uh, our Neola policy revisions, and Dr. Sanders?
Mr. President, may I combine all three of these together since they're informational? Um, so, uh, as many school corporations do, they partner with a, uh, an organization called Neola, uh, who works with Lewis Capes, uh, Law Firm, and, uh, they basically track, uh, changes in law that might come out of the state legislature, and, uh, other, uh, federal laws that, that might have changed, uh, policies. And they send a recommendation to the school corporation on policy revisions. Uh, and then we, uh, look at those revisions ourselves, uh, and we have, uh, Ferguson Law, Christine Bartlett, uh, here, uh, pours through the revisions, uh, we send them out to our school administrators, uh, we, like, uh, directors, uh, depending on the, the policy, uh, like we, Vicki Coffey, uh, had some suggestions about, uh, even though Neola wanted to change something, uh, she, uh, wanted it to change a different way. So, uh, we do personalize that to the needs of our school corporation, and make sure that, that we also continue to, to follow the, uh, the citations, legal citations, and that's what Christine helped us with. So, we have, uh, three different sets of policy revisions, uh, for first reading, so no decisions are being made tonight. Volume 34, number two, uh, and some of the, uh, policies, uh, in, uh, volume 34, number two, are, uh, refers to board vacancies, uh, public participation in board meetings, curriculum, uh, school accountability, food service, uh, school visitors, and other issues. Uh, for, uh, volume 35, number one, uh, those policies, uh, are addressing athletics, grievance, grievance procedures, uh, driver education, high ability program, adjunct teachers, supplemental pay for teachers, and suspension and expulsions. And then, uh, the last set, volume 34, number two, uh, some of the topics are election and eligibility for the board, uh, members to serve, uh, recording meetings, uh, search and seizure, uh, student fees, and, uh, other policies. So, what I, uh, you, the board has been given a copy of, uh, these revisions, uh, where it, they're marked up copies, which shows the old language and the new, new language. Uh, so, I'd like to just ask the board, uh, over the next few weeks, to please look those over. If there's something in there that you have a concern with, please let me know, and, uh, we'll consult with the other board members and consider any changes at the October board meeting. So, at the October board meeting, we will be asking the, the board to approve, uh, all of these policies.
Thank you. Any questions?
I just, it's The majority of the changes are technical in nature.
Yes.
They're either language corrections or just small changes to fall in line with a change that the legislature might have made, those kinds of things. What I saw, it was, there was nothing, uh, particular concern, it's, they're all fairly small changes, except for some of the legally required things.
Anything further? Okay, thank you. Moving on, uh, speaking of policies, uh, this, we're going to consider amending policy 6320 and administrative guidance 6320. Um, Mr. Irwin?
Yes, so this is our purchase and policy, and this is the second reading for action. Uh, what this does is it brings us into alignment with the state purchasing threshold, um, so that way, a small purchase is anything below $50,000. That allows us to make open march, open market purchases below that amount. Essentially, what that's gonna allow us to do is, it is going to reduce some of the administrative burden on some of the things that we're doing on a day-to-day, week-to-week, month-to-month basis. That is gonna save a lot of time for, for us on a business standpoint, and create a lot more efficiencies with certain things that need to get done. Um, so, we're excited about hopefully having the opportunity to line this up, um, and give us that freedom to do those things. The other quick thing that it does have in there is, um, I had updated some language in there about the, uh, the ability to also email an invitation to quote. Uh, not very many businesses are wanting you to mail them an invitation to quote, so typically, we're, we're looking for them that way. So, with that, that just kind of notes the red changes, it doesn't really change any of the other pieces within that. Administrative guideline, then, would just be trued up to that as well, again, going up to the $50,000 mark, so at $50,000 to $150,000, we're doing three written quotes that we're soliciting for, and actually inviting quotation on that, so. With that, I'm asking for your approval of this action item for procurement change.
Good. We have motion?
I move for the amendment to, uh, language regarding purchasing.
I'll second.
Muted, any questions?
Just a quick question.
On the first part of that, up to $50,000, that will not come, none of that will come to the board, correct?
Unless it's an agreement. So, if it's an agreement, and then it still would come to the board, because only the board can enter into an agreement. If it is not something that comes with an agreement, then no, it would not come to the board for, uh, approval.
Okay, and then this, this policy that we're voting on, if things were changed with the dynamics of the, of the business manager or the board, the pre, ongoing boards could go back and change that if they wanted to, correct?
Yeah, it's a policy, so yeah, the board
They could, they could dial it back.
Can always change policy.
Okay, I just want to make sure it's not, so.
We're aligned with the statement.
Correct.
And we are not out on an island making this change.
Right, I checked a couple of others, yes, we're
A lot of places starting to do with the change in cost of items and doing business in a school corporation of our size. It's not, it's not hard to reach that point.
Okay. All right, I'm good.
Yeah, and with, uh, inflation, $50,000 didn't go as far as it used to. So, when that policy was first said, uh, many, many years ago, uh, it's probably basically about the same impact, uh, at this point. Um, then muted, seconded, correct? All right, uh, any further discussion?
When we, well, we would still see, we would still see that expenditure
Oh, yeah.
Within the reports.
You're gonna see that within the financial report.
Within the financial, yeah, we'll see that, okay.
It's just not gonna be lined out in a specific agenda item during, during any given month, unless, of course, again, like that was, it came along with an agreement, so there is some sort of, a long-term agreement with whatever it is that we're purchasing, then yes, you would still see that.
Right.
If it doesn't come with that, and it's just an open market purchase for, let's just say it's, um, some desk, then no, you wouldn't see that.
Right, okay. And this in no way impacts ECA?
This would
ECA had, ECA does, was not part of this.
It would, I think it would align, I, I would imagine it would align those policies, if I'm not mistaken. Christine, would I be wrong with that?
Um, I'm, I'm not sure that this would affect ECA. What are we doing now?
That's, that was kind of my, like, an extra, like, if, if a coach wanted to go buy something, they had a large amount of money.
I think that's controlled by the principal. The principal makes those decisions.
It's pretty rare that the buildings are making a purchase of
I know, I'm just thinking for protection of, of everybody.
Yeah.
So, someone might want to double check on that, ECA, okay.
And this would show up on our claims and
Right, right.
Still be made aware of it, just
Correct.
Wouldn't have to have an agenda item.
I don't think we see all the ECA claims, though.
You get ECA financials.
We get the financials, but it doesn't show individual breakouts, I don't think, so, all right.
Anything further? Hear none? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the consideration to approve, um, contracted bus route extensions, and this would be for routes 10 and 17. Uh, Mr. Irwin?
Yeah, we've had to come back, and Audrey made some, uh, some smaller changes, uh, to a couple of the contract routes, routes 10 and 17 specifically, which is why you see a contract addendum for those two routes, um, that follows, um, on the, the price per mile, as far as what it is that they bid on bid day, as far as what the board had, had accepted on their bids. So, it's just an extension of those routes based on the, the need to continue to pick up students, kind of in that general area. As we go through the year, it's kind of like everything else, some of those routes and some of those things, year to year, continue to change a little bit, and some of the changes with housing developments are maybe causing us to go a little bit further this way, and continuing to try to route people on the right side of the road. So, it brings its own challenges, so this has just comes along with that, and so, um, Audrey had, um, already talked with the contractors, so you see that the contractors, uh, had already, uh, showed that they were accepting of, of this amendment, so this is just the board formally accepting that amendment to those contracts for, for routes 10 and 17.
Do we have motion?
I move to approve the contract extensions.
I have a second.
Muted, any further discussion? Hear none? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. And our last action item is consideration to approve the Healthy Meals Incentive Grant, um, CFDA number 10.579. Mr. Irwin?
Yeah, so, this one is for, for Vicki, this one's for Vicki, uh, with Nutrition Services. So, this grant is bringing in about $150,000 that helps us with our farm-to-school initiative that brings more local foods and local chefs into our schools. Um, the consultant that you see the MOU with, um, is one that I'm actually familiar with. I know her from a previous school corporation that I worked in, and she's, she's pretty fantastic. Uh, she is going to, uh, work, uh, with us in achieving those goals of, of using more local foods and bringing them into our school. Um, the MOU outlines what it is that we're exactly paying the consultant for, and how much we're paying her for, and so, it's that $80,000 over the course of now until June of 2025. Um, so with that, I recommend your approval, please.
I move I'm sorry.
Muted, seconded. Any discussion?
This is funded by a grant.
It is funded by a grant, yes.
That Ms. Coffey wrote.
Yes, and so, she's, uh, this is something that I know that we're even tying back some of the pieces of this into the curriculum. We were having some conversations today about, you know, talked about, I think it was last month, maybe she talked about the hydroponic units and bringing that back in, so there's a lot of bringing that, that real-world relevance back into the curriculum. She's really excited about this endeavor and, and what it means for, for our kids and for the schools, so, um, she's, she's pretty pumped.
Okay. Any further discussion? I, uh, was excited during the showcase, uh, at the junior high, to see the, um, hydroponic system for, uh, growing, I think, maybe spices or, or something in, in there, so, I, I thought that was really cool. I didn't know we were going down, doing that, so that's awesome. And the students are involved in that, so that's, makes it especially exciting, so. Okay, anything further? Do, we have a motion, right? Seconded, okay. Sorry. All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. I'm so excited about what we're doing, I can't keep up with whether we have a motion or not. Okay, um, now we have the superintendent's report. Dr. Sanders?
Since Matt, uh, didn't put as many items on the agenda tonight, uh, gave me the, uh, gives me the opportunity to give a longer report. Um, so, uh, no, I have some good things to share with you. Uh, as everybody knows, I think most everybody was, was, uh, here for the celebrate, celebrate Edgewood Showcase. Uh, it accomplished, uh, all of our goals, um, and, uh, you know, we were looking forward to having a, a nice, a crowd from, uh, our school community, uh, to be at the showcase. We've never done this before, so I really didn't know if we were gonna have a few or too many, you know, I don't know if you could ever have too many, but, uh, we had, uh, just the right amount. Every place I went, it was, uh, full, not crowded, but full, um, the people, uh, we wanted parents to be able to check out, uh, our, uh, facilities and programs, uh, not just at their child's current school, but at the other levels, and they did that. The, the passport, uh, idea really helped with that. We had a lot of, uh, families, a lot of students who, uh, took that as a challenge, and, uh, made it a goal to, to go to every, uh, facility, and, and they did that. Um, and we really just wanted to host a fun night for our community. We have such a beautiful campus, and, uh, we wanted to have a, a nice evening, um, with the food trucks and the bounce house and, uh, the obstacle course, and the, the train was a big hit, and, uh, we had the wellness fair that night. There was just a lot of things going on, and, of course, we learned a few things, uh, that we'll, uh, try to make some adjustments, uh, next year. Uh, but, it was a big success because we have, we had an amazing planning team, uh, we had a lot of great, uh, volunteers, both students and adults, and, uh, so, uh, yes, we'll, we'll do this again, uh, hopefully the first Thursday, uh, in September in 2024. Um, going on, uh, I always like to, to recognize people, uh, people in our school community who are making a positive difference, and, uh, just recently, we had our annual Dollars for Scholars Race, and, uh, I'm telling you that there are, uh, that's a year-round effort to prepare, uh, for the Dollars and Scholars Race, uh, the, we have people from the community, Dirk is on that team, Brittany Tucker, uh, myself, uh, and, uh, others, I'm probably forgetting Johnny Lindsay, uh, leads up the whole thing, and, uh, they
Carrie.
Carrie Landgreub, yes, thank you, thank you. And, uh, they raised, uh, over $23,000, uh, from that, that, uh, race, and, uh, that all goes to scholarships for Edgewood students. And so, that's pretty exciting stuff. I always like to share some community involvement, uh, incident, uh, community involvement activities that our school corporation is involved in. Uh, one of them is the Edelsville Chamber of Commerce Awards Dinner on October 26th, uh, from 6 o'clock to 8 o'clock, and, uh, that's also a great night, um, where, uh, we'll be able to recognize, uh, one of our teachers, and this year, the Educator of the Year Award is Doug Wilson, uh, who teaches social studies at the high school, and, uh, he was nominate, nominated by, uh, student Caleb Sykes. And, uh, and so, we were able to recognize Doug, uh, in an event, uh, last week, and, uh, we'll have the event on October 26th. Uh, and also, our Edge Media, uh, at the junior high, will be doing the videos for those awards again this year. Then, um, the Monroe County Fall Festival, September 21st through the 23rd, uh, the opening ceremony on the 21st at 6 o'clock will, uh, include our Edgewood choirs. Uh, RBB will have a booth, uh, during, uh, the whole festival, and, uh, that'll give us an opportunity to interact with the community. And then the parade will be on Saturday, the 23rd at noon, and, of course, we'll have, uh, Edgewood students and our, uh, food truck in the parade again this year. And as I started to, to give it away earlier, but, uh, we received, uh, our, uh, Secured School Safety Grant Award of $99,540, which, uh, helps to pay for, uh, two of our school resource officers, and it's always nice to, to get that award. Uh, every year, um, I get a little more nervous because more and more schools, uh, are recognizing that this is an opportunity of, of funding, and, uh, and they this is an opportunity of, of funding, and, and they warn us every year that, just, just know, a lot of schools have applied, but we were able to get that full grant again this year. So we're excited about that. And then, as we've been talking lately about the high reliability schools, the initiatives that, that we're getting started in, that really is not, it's not a new initiative at all. It's just really a way that we're going to be able to tie in all the work we're doing with PLCs and our curriculum, our teaching and learning, and Ready Schools. And so we're learning more and more about how we're going to be able to take all those initiatives and sustain them for the long term. And so we have some folks going October second through the fourth to Birmingham, Alabama, Dirk Ackerman, Jordan Key, Brenda Whitaker, Kent Rensler, and Andy Scholl. And then the HRS Summit in San Antonio, San Antonio, Texas will be January twenty-ninth through the thirty-first, and Heather Kenzick, Katie Key, John Siglin, John Kerr, Mariah Bruce, and Megan Scott. John, Mariah, and Megan are, are Ready Schools instructional coaches. And then Jennifer Barrett, Jennifer Anderson, and I will be attending both events. And when I attended this summer, and I was really blown away by the conference I attended, but more importantly, I was blown away by the conversations that we were able to have during the conference and, and the evenings that really helped with the planning. So I made a determination right then that I really wanted to be a superintendent, wanted to be at each of these conferences, so I could be part of those conversations. And then next summer, we'll have an opportunity for all the administrators to get together and map this out for where we're going as a school corporation and start getting our teachers involved in that project. And then, as already mentioned tonight, we'll have the work session on Wednesday at three o'clock to look at some of our, and review some of our architect drawings and get the input of the board and anybody else who might show up and, and want to see what we're doing. So looking forward to Wednesday, so. That's my report.
And that'll be in this room.
That'll be in this room.
Okay. All right, awesome. Any questions? Okay. Now we have RBB EA comments, and we have Mr. Doug Eels for, with us this evening.
Good evening. Really only one thing on my agenda and my role here. As we get into September, Dr. Sanders, Matt, and myself met for about two minutes today for our annual required public hearing to open bargaining. So the official bargaining window is open. They've, the state has given us a window years ago, September fifteenth to November fifteenth, so here we are, and we'll have some meetings here in the future. We're looking forward to that. We've had many years of good relations, and we expect the same as well. So that's really about it on the agenda. Not related, I wore the shirt tonight. Got this last Saturday. Hoosiers outrun cancer. It's an annual run, so five K over at IU Stadium, so I did not hurt myself luckily. It's billed as the biggest five K in the state, and I can imagine it is. It's bigger than a lot of minis I've gone to, but it was really cool to see former students, current students. And the reason I mention it is because we have a current teacher at DIS that put together a team, Team KB for Karen Burris, who passed away last December. And there were a bunch of us out there, and we, we made a tailgate of it. It was very fun. Somebody did the hero role, I think took the stroller at the end to make themselves look tough. Jen Barrett was out there, too, pushing the stroller with Brooks, finishing it up as well. But it was a good time. It's lots of reflection, but also gratitude, so appreciate everything we have as we go through this. So that's really all I have, so looking forward to bargaining and having a successful time with that.
Thank you very much. Okay, now on to board member comments. I'll start with Mr. Demoss.
Yeah, I suspect that Brooks probably provided a lot of the energy that Ms. Barrett needed for the five K.
There you go. There you go. Go long ago, change slow a little faster.
I just, thanks to the Don Calden Foundation, the Calden family's been such an important part of our school system for years. Welcome to Sam Miller. I'm looking forward to, to seeing him in the role, and I think he'll do a terrific job. The Dollars for Scholars was a lot of fun. It was a good turnout and well, well put together. I, I run with a lot of, well, I walk, but a lot of the runners in the MAG Seven series always speak well of, of the, of the Dollars for Scholars race, so nice job there. I'm looking forward to the Fall Festival. I think it'll be a lot of fun. Hope people come out and see our table there. Showcase was a lot of fun. I was just blown away by how many people came, the positive responses that I heard, meeting former students who are now parents of current students, and, and some of them challenged me whether I could remember who they were, but I, I, I think I acquitted myself pretty well. The volleyball and the, the soccer games were great. It was just, the Coffee Corral, it was just a, it was a terrific night. It was just so much fun, so, thank you.
Mr. Irwin.
Thank you. I did want to take time again to thank Dr. Sanders. He really pushed towards getting this new, this third SRO. He was very convincing to the town board, and I didn't have any problems whatsoever getting that through, so I was real tickled about that. And the showcase was fantastic. I couldn't walk everywhere to get, get going, so I had to get on the golf cart and get around a couple of times. So it was fantastic. I appreciate it. And thank you, you administrators, for being here. We appreciate what you do for us.
Mr. Becker.
Yeah, ditto. Thanks, thanks for coming out this evening. I know the miniature's had a long day today. Appreciate coming out. Thanks, thanks to, for Rick and the tech department for all the technology. It's pretty, it's pretty cool. I'm still trying to figure out if we're doing, are we doing live TV here somehow?
First of all, we have a few issues tonight.
I'm trying to figure out where, where that camera's at. I don't know. Okay, I got you. I got that one. I thought there was another one hiding somewhere, so. But now it looks good, so kudos on the, on the showcase. Mr. Demoss and I were kind of reflecting that night about saying, well, all these old students we used to have, and trying to remember who's who, but the one, my favorite comments was, man, schools have changed so much in the last fifteen years, because a lot of them haven't seen all the improvements, so that was fun, fun to hear. Congrats to Mr. Wilson for his educator of the year award. I want to do one correction, Dr. Sanders, on the twenty-three thousand dollars. That's just the sponsor money.
Yeah.
That was just a sponsorship, so they, then they have the, so thanks to all the businesses that donated to come up with that dollar amount, and if, if you have any interest in helping out with Dollars for Scholars, get owed to Johnny Lindsay at the bank, and it's a, it's a great program to help kids out in, in the springtime. So I think that's all I've got, so thank you, and have a, have a great fall.
One more comment. I like the blinds, Jerry.
Yeah.
I like Matt, I like the blinds, those are nice.
Well, it was either measured wrong or it's broken, we don't know. We didn't get a straight story there, but the, the last one there will be fixed hopefully pretty soon, but yeah, it was very nice not having to stare into the sun today.
A story.
Yeah.
I also was just so impressed with the showcase. I thought it was an excellent idea, and I was blown away with how well-attended it was, and the fact that everybody was having a really good time. And, and it's important for our families and our community to, to get opportunities to, to come into the schools and, and see what we're doing. It's, even sitting here, I don't have a clue for what goes on every day, because there's just so much, and we've got such great people, you know, the people here tonight. The AHS Coffee Corral was, that presentation was excellent. I thought the students did very, very well with that, and they have good leadership in that as well. I also appreciate the SEO present, presentation tonight. It's really good to actually see those numbers. You know, you always wonder, you know, well, how many kids are we actually, you know, working with? And, and so to see those numbers and the different kinds of things we're doing with those students is, is great. And again, it prepares them not only to be successful at school, but to be successful at home and, and in the job market later. Do want to thank Katz again. I hear we had a couple glitches with the, with the live streaming, but we'll get those worked out, and we appreciate all the, the help you guys give us in, in getting that done. It's important for the community to be able to be in, get real-time experience with, with what's going on here. So with that, again, thank everyone for coming, and I hope you all have a wonderful evening, and this meeting's adjourned.